And we're live.
Oh, no.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bowman?
Here.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Here.
Councilmember Gollambeck?
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Present.
Council President Pridgen?
Aki.
Councilmember Rivera?
Present.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Present.
Councilmember Wingo?
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Here.
Former president.
The pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia. With liberty and justice for all.
Our council chaplain, the Reverend Dr. L. Warner.
Thank you. The... If you have, uh... Walked up and down sidewalks and looked in art and photography stores in Buffalo, you oftentimes see pictures of our beautiful lighthouses. And as a city on the lake, we're known for those lighthouses and the years of service that they put into the city. The scripture that I have is Matthew, chapter five, verses fourteen to sixteen. "You are the light of the world. Like a city on a hilltop that can't be hidden, no one lights a lamp and then puts it under a basket. Instead, a lamp is placed on a stand where it gives light to everyone in the house. In the same way, let your good deed shine out for all to see, so that everyone will praise your heavenly Father." That phrase, "You are the light of the world like a city on a hilltop that can't be hidden." And I thought about, um, how lighthouses are beautiful when they're photographed. And, uh, Dev and I've been to some of our lighthouses and put them, you know, on Facebook page. And they're cute and quaint and lovely, uh, but actually, lighthouses weren't built for days like the one we're experiencing today.
Quaint.
They were built for days of great storm and turmoil. And that's when a lighthouse comes into impact, into effect, when it takes up the mantle of why it was built, why it was created. Because it's meant to be there to save lives. And then the scripture that talks about the fact that a city on a hilltop, a city on a hilltop, as the light of the world. So, in these days, there are certainly days of great storm for the council and great storms for, uh, City Hall, great storms for many of our neighborhoods, great storms for many of our businesses and educators, great storms for arts and entertainment with Shay's announcement, great storms. There needs to be a place of light and lighthouse. And, uh, my prayer today, as I pray, is going to be for this council. And, you know, when we meet on the thirteenth floor of City Hall, we're taller than any lighthouse on the entire lake, because we're above all of that. And that there'll be for us a call to be a city on a hill that others find light from the direction that we're given by the Father. Let's pray. Father, thank you for your goodness. Lord, this scripture is such a powerful image. The light of the world, a city set on a hill. And Buffalo, for much of its history, has been a city that other smaller cities in upstate New York looked up to and pioneered so many things throughout the years. But Father, even as that lighthouse imagery rings true for our lakeshore, it also rings true that lighthouses are built for days of storm. I thank you, Father, that this council, right now in the storm, can still be a light on a hill. I pray that you'd bring light to our discussions, light to our deliberations, light to the legislation that rests on the shoulders of each of these nine. I pray, Father, for those in neighborhoods that are feeling the darkness, that even now, that there's going to be a sense of light that permeates, light that penetrates and light that sets things right. Lord, I thank you that that light for this city on a hill comes from you. And I pray even now that it would shine brightly through us, in us, and on us. And we thank you in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. Councilmember, thank you, Dr. Warner. Councilmembers, any memorials? Councilmember Bowman, then Councilmember Gollambeck.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, this is a tough one for the Lovejoy neighborhood and the Lovejoy district. We lost Bud Hastings, who was a longtime resident on Longnecker Street. And he, uh, was just an activist in the community. I was working with Bud on a couple of issues around his house. Just saw him three weeks ago, and he looked fine as could be. So, just a stark reminder, just to, you know, uh, live every day in the moment. And, uh, we're gonna miss Bud to his wife Kitty, his daughters and sons. We wish you all the best, and you're in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sorry to hear that. Councilmember Gollambeck?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the Black Rock, Grant Amherst neighborhood, lost Ed Popeye, uh, also known as Papage. Uh, that's the same name that Popeye the Sailor Man comes in, who was a Polish character once upon a time. Um, but Mr. Popeye was a barber in the neighborhood, and he was known for taking care of people when they needed help, uh, whether it was financially or, uh, giving them a free haircut or a little bit of food or whatever. Um, he's gonna be very, very sorely missed by his children. And then also, uh, Jeff Benjamin passed away. Some of you may have been to the Viking Lobster Company, the Viking Restaurant. Uh, that was Jeff Benjamin's pride and joy. Um, he was a real fixture in the North Buffalo, West Side, Black Rock Riverside neighborhoods. Um, gonna be very, very sorely missed by his daughter Stacy, his sons, and by a multitude of, uh, friends and neighbors.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just wanna send out prayers to the family of Lanita Lewis. I know she had her funeral, um, last Friday. Um, I hadn't seen Lanita in a long time, but she was someone who I truly admired. She worked with me at the bank. And I saw in her obituary that she had risen to the level of Vice President, um, which, when I worked there, didn't see a lot of people that looked like me as Vice President. So, I just admired her. She was just one of the sweetest, kindest people. Um, you, every time you saw her, she had a good word. Um, so, um, my heart prayer, my heart goes out to her family, and then we'll definitely keep them in our prayers. Thank you.
Any others?
Uh, yes, she was, um, I was honored to be able to, uh, funeralize her. We actually went to high school together and then got our bachelor's from the same college and got our master's from the same college. Um, and, uh, she's going to be missed. Also, Macy Faber, uh, who was a jazz lover, aficionado, if you will, of jazz, was on the radio, um, here in the city of Buffalo. I remember being on his show, uh, in the past, and I listened to a very little bit of jazz. I like jazz, but I don't know much about it. So, he has me on and asked me, "What's your favorite jazz?" Uh, of course, I said Grover Washington, Buffalo Zone. Uh, so I was very surprised to hear that, uh, he passed. He'll be, his viewing will be Friday evening at the Thomas T. Edwards Funeral Home, and his services will be Saturday, ten a.m., viewing, and eleven o'clock service at the True Bethel, uh, church on nine oh seventy Sberry. So, to his family and to the many jazz lovers, um, his, his service will reflect his life, uh, in that jazz will be, um, played at his service, so he'll be, uh, missed.
Seeing no others, as always, we remember men and women who may have given their life for the freedom of our country, for the freedom for other people since our last meeting. We pause in these chambers for a moment of silence. Thank you all. And on a motion by Mr. Rivera, second by Mr. Scanlon, the minutes of the stated meeting held on September twenty ninth, twenty twenty are approved. Councilmembers, are there, the late files are before you. Are there any objections to the late files before you? Hearing no objection, we will hear the entire agenda that is before us today. I believe we're going from the top, Majority Leader? Yes, we are. From the top.
Item number one, veto message CCP twenty dash three five five ordinance amendment, chapter four seven nine traffic ordinance.
Motion to send to legislation.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number two, abandonment and sale of portion of land beneath Buffalo River.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by Councilmember, uh, Scanlon.
Item number three, Community Foundation for Greater Buffalo Lead Education.
Motion to approve items three, four, and five.
Second by council. Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Do a roll call for the approvals?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gollambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item?
Item number six, Silo Pilot?
Let's reapprove that one.
Item number seven.
Seven.
Item number seven, submission of monthly report, September twenty twenty.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number eight, appoint director of development?
Um, I believe this is an approved. I was, is Councilmember?
Yes.
Wingle?
Yes. Um, this is an approval. The Comptroller's Office specifically asked if we could not send this to civil service, asked to delay, uh, the needed work that this individual would be doing in the Comptroller's Office. Therefore, I would like for there to be, for there to be a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. There's no objections.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto? I think you're, you're mutant son.
Yes.
Councilmember Gollambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
So, move. Item number nine, Fitch Ratings Incorporated, Buffalo, New York downgrade?
Motion to send to finance.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number ten, In Round Fifty Four, List of Delinquent Taxes, Use or Fees, and Sue or Rent, Volume One and Till?
Uh, motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Farrelletto.
Item number eleven, Buffalo Fire Department Interior Improvements at Various Locations?
Motion to approve items eleven through thirteen.
Um, is fourteen going to be approved, Council, uh, Majority Leader?
Uh, were there any questions regarding that, change water speed limit signs? Um, there was some discussion in caucus. Um, there's no objection, we can move to approve.
Then you can go all the way to item twenty-two if you want to.
Go all the way to item twenty-two.
All right. Motion is to approve, all the way to item twenty-two, second by Councilmember Farrelletto.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gollambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Majority Leader? Item number twenty-three, approval to renew contract, Western Europe Polygraph Services.
Hold on one second, Councilmember Wingo?
Thank you, Council President. Real quick, uh, I wanna thank the Council Chief of Staff, uh, Malcolm Eartha, for bringing this to my attention. The item that I will speak in reference to in the mayor's line, I apologize. I got my appointments across. It is not for the Comptroller's Office. That was actually an appointment for the mayor that did not need to go to civil service. But it would be the same Majority Leader here for the item for the Comptroller's Office. And thank you for bringing that to my attention, just for the record. I wanna make sure that everyone knows that I did misspoke. That was not for the Comptroller's Office, that was for the mayor's office. Thank you, Mr. President.
Not a problem. Next item?
Item number twenty-three, uh, Buffalo Police Department Approval to Renew Contract.
Motion to send finance.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number twenty-four, Permission to Enter Contract for Buffalo Police Department K nine Veterinary Services.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Scanlon.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gollambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number twenty-five, Permission to Accept Funding Under Twenty Twenty Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant.
Motion to send to finance.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number twenty-six, Food Store License Twenty Five Seventy Seven Bailey.
Motion to send legislation, item twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Uh, second by Councilmember Farrelletto.
Item number twenty-eight, Food Store License One Thirty Nine Grant.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Gollambeck.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Council, Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gollambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council, Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number twenty-nine, Food Store License Two Fifty Seven Niagara, AKA Two Fifty Nine.
Motion to send legislation.
Second by Councilmember Gollambeck.
And thirty can go to legislation as well.
Thirty can go to legislation as well.
Thank you for saving us time, Councilman. Second by Councilmember Gollambeck. Next.
Item number thirty-one, Police Department Obtaining Toy Vehicle?
Motion to approve, thirty-one, thirty-two, can you scroll down? The thirty-one and thirty-two.
Second by the President Proton Scanlon.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gollambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number thirty-three, Notice of Intention Request to Rename Columbus Park as Prospect Park.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by Councilmember Farrelletto.
Item number thirty-four, Leap of Absence.
Motion to receive and file items thirty-four through thirty-six.
Second by Councilmember Gollambeck.
Item number thirty-seven, Notice of Appointment, Council Intern Eight.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number thirty-eight, Notice of Appointment, Laborer Two.
Motion to send to civil service, items thirty-eight and thirty-nine.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number forty, Appoint Legislative Aid?
Motion to adopt items forty and forty-one.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number forty-two, Complaint Against Buffalo Police Department on Behalf of Morgan Eaton?
Motion to send police oversight.
Second by Councilmember Gollambeck.
Item number forty-three, uh, CPC Budget and Bond Sale Recommendation?
Motion to send to finance.
Second by President Proton Scanlon.
Item number forty-four, Council Meeting Transcription?
Motion to receive and file items forty-four through forty-six.
Second by Councilmember Farrelletto.
Item number forty-seven, Opposition to the Montante Solar Proposal?
Motion to send to legislation, items forty-seven, forty-eight, and forty-nine.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number fifty, Urban Think Tank and N B A W N Y dash L O S of Criminal Justice Reform Task Force.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number fifty-one, Special Use Permit, Seven Twenty Six Jefferson for Assembly.
Motion to send legislation, City Planning Board.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number fifty-two, Three Eighty Nine Manhattan Petition?
Motion to send to CD, items fifty-two and fifty-three.
Second by Councilmember Gollambeck.
Item number fifty-four, Special Use Permit, Three Fifty One Tacoma for Tavern, Outdoor Dining, Live Entertainment.
Motion to legislation and City Planning Board, items fifty-four through fifty-six.
Second by Councilmember Farrelletto.
Submissions list, Civil Service, item number one, Appoint Associate Auditor?
Uh, motion is to approve, uh, both items one and two.
Second by the Majority Leader Rivera.
Community Development, item number three, Request for Designated Developer Status of City-Owned Parcels Located at Sixty-One Terrace.
Do we need to approve those two items, the roll call on the last two?
Uh, yeah. Yes, indeed. Um, items number one and two, under civil service, Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gollambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
And, Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Uh, under Community Development, item number three, Request for Designated Developer Status of City-Owned Parcels Located at Sixty-One Terrace.
Motion is to approve.
Second by Majority Leader Rivera.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gollambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
And Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number four, Notice of Intention Naming Parcel at Main and North Division Streets?
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Gollambeck, I'm sorry, uh, Scanlon.
Item number five, Name Parcel at Main and North Division Streets?
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Scanlon.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gollambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number six, Notification Cereals?
Motion to receive and file.
Uh, second, you want to receive?
Including seven.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Legislation, item number eight, uh, City of Buffalo Department of Permanent Inspection to Provide Guidance on Outdoor Heat Lambs.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number nine, uh, Special Use Permit, Thirteen Thirty Five Hurdle for Tavern, Outdoor Dining, Artisan Industrial.
Number nine?
Motion to approve items nine through thirteen.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gollambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Education, item fourteen, FBI Buffalo Citizens Academy Alumni Association Request?
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Resolutions, item number fifty-seven, ATV and Unregistered Recreational Use Vehicles?
Motion to send to legislation.
Second by Councilmember Bowman. And councilmembers, um, when, I just wanna remind you, when the agenda's up, I can't see you. So, if you wanna speak on the item, just let me know. Councilmember Bowman, did you wanna speak on that?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. Just, uh, wanted to introduce this item and, uh, say that we'll be talking more about it in legislation, but it's a problem that gets worse every year. Uh, the ATVs driving in our streets and on our parks. So, we're looking at increasing fines, uh, potentially impounding the vehicle if possible. So, looking forward to working with the Law Department and to see how we can, uh, you know, put our residents at ease and get this problem under control.
And I know in caucus, we, we had a lot of discussion. A lot of the council members, uh, were in support. So, I thought it was very important that you spoke to this item for the public, uh, so that they would know the council is not ignoring it. Um, and it will be discussed, uh, next Tuesday. So, thank you for this resolution. Anybody else, Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I wanna thank my colleague for putting this forth. I know we've had a lot of conversation. Um, we have been in a number of the E District Police Meetings in which this is addressed, and many residents have concerns on this matter. Um, I actually had some further, um, conversation with someone that has done doing some stories on this, um, that is also a part of a legal, um, a legal ring of illegal activity. Um, so, we really need to get a handle on this, but I wanna do a little bit more research on that aspect and talk to our police department on that. But it's a little bit more than what we see. Um, but I know it's a dangerous situation for residents. And again, I commend my colleague and those who have signed on, um, for our efforts to address it, because we just can't continue to let it go on as if, um, there's no, um, law. There is law. Um, it's just that we, the police department has taken a tack. I'm not to do chasing because it is a danger to the rest of the public. Um, but we have to do something, and I commend Councilmember Bowman and look forward to working with him and, um, coming up with some resolutions for this. Thank you.
And if possible, if we can have, and then I'll come to you, Councilmember Rivera, if we could, uh, have a, the, from the police department on what their policy is, so that when we get together on Tuesday, um, we have real clear, uh, direction on what the police department's policy is. Um, even Councilmember, uh, Farrelletto talked about this in caucus. I brought it up also, um, because I think there is some confusion on whether the police do, um, tag or take, um, vehicles and exactly how they're handling. So, if we can get that for Tuesday, I think that would really help in our discussion. Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I was just gonna recommend the same, that we have, um, somebody from the police department there to talk about, you know, the policy now. The policy regards to stopping them as, um, when they're, you know, just fuel them out in the street. Uh, and the other one is when they're hanging out in large groups, as they've been, uh, doing recently in my district. They, I mean, there's like a hundred of them. They were kicked out of, uh, Broderick Park, uh, they're kicked out of Niagara Street, and they're up and down Connecticut Street. And we've gotten a number of calls from the residents, and they wanna know why aren't the police doing anything? And there's probably an explanation, they don't want to get into a chase with them. However, what is the policy going forward? If you're not gonna get into a chase, how are we gonna condition them to obey the vehicle and traffic laws of New York State? Uh, and how to prevent something terrible from happening? Because they do go up and down their street, bigzagging, going the wrong way. It's just a matter of time before we have a fatality for somebody, you know, even the, even the person that's driving on the, on the three-wheel or four-wheel vehicles, uh, gets into an accident. So, I wanna thank Councilmember Brian Bowman, and we want the police department to come down. This was gonna be part of a discussion in police oversight, but I'm glad we're gonna hold this meeting. Uh, while we're talking about police oversight in this matter, that was gonna be brought up. Uh, I just want the general public to know that we are attempting to hold a police oversight meeting, where, um, we had a commitment from the Commissioner, uh, that we would be quarterly to discuss matters that, um, uh, different matters. And we've, um, we're extending the opportunity to the Commissioner. We're working around his schedule. However, we have to lock in a date, we will lock in a date, and we hope that he's there to answer the questions. We wanna work with the police department. I think we've had a good working relationship with Buffalo Police Department. As a matter of fact, I think most of the reforms that we're going through right now started somewhere in police oversight. So, we encourage the administration and the Commissioner, um, to work with our staff to schedule these meetings going forward, so we can lock them in way in advance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Noakowski? Did you?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, uh, commend my, uh, colleague, uh, Councilmember Brian Bowman. I think the other department that we need to bring into this discussion is the Parking Department and what their current policy is now for impounding, um, ATVs and thinking about, you know, how we can craft legislation to empower this, um, situation[1748.34] And thinking about, you know, how we can craft legislation to empower this um situation in our neighborhoods that are, you know, Seneca, Babcock areas getting hit hard. My neighborhood is getting hit hard. So um just so that we can expand this conversation. So in committee, we um have all the various departments needed to have a well-rounded conversation. Thank you.
Agree. Um I know, and I said it in caucus, I got a letter from folks who live around LaSalle Park. Uh well, it's not LaSalle Park anymore, uh the Centennial Park um. And they are upset and think the police aren't doing anything. And that's why I think it's important for the police to be there because they are doing, you know, but they are, this is like something that grew and mushroomed. Um and so at the end of the day, um you know, we we our police can't spend every day, all day. Um and these ATVs obviously can go where the police vehicles cannot. And I think that's where some people forget. They know they can get away from the police very, very easily. Like in my neighborhood, they just go through a field or something and the police car can't go through the field. So having the police there, uh you know, is is important. So good job, council member Bowman. Anybody else?
Mr. President, if I could just clarify the request for this item specifically, which is going to legislation and not police oversight. You want their policy in writing for them to appear or both?
If if they're going to appear, then they can just state it for the record. If if for some reason they cannot appear, then we need the explanation in writing of what their policy is concerning uh these ATVs.
Understood, sir. We'll be reaching out today.
Yeah, it the the appearance would be the best thing because then council members could ask questions. But if the schedule doesn't permit, we need something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, next item.
Item number fifty eight designation of Black Lives Matter Way.
Mister Chair, um I want to thank uh the community. This has been on the table for a while. Um this is something that was special to me in that Mackay Edwards, a student in Buffalo Public Schools and his friends reached out um and they wanted to do something. They wanted to participate in the calls for change and they had seen across the country uh where uh municipalities would either write Black Lives Matter in the street. We know in Buffalo in a few weeks, you wouldn't see it once the snow starts to fly. Um and we wanted to do something a little more significant and they are very pleased that this council um has taken this up. Um we put in a blank basically so that we would have this opportunity as a council to vote on this together. Um the resolution, if you have not received it, I'll just go to the resolves. Uh and people can read the resolution online after this meeting. Resolve that the city of Buffalo Common Council designates Fillmore Avenue between Main Street, well, the entire Fillmore Avenue, which is Main Street to Seneca Street as Black Lives Matter Way in honor of the Black Lives Movement and the continued events that have happened in our country. Um and so it has been overwhelmingly Fillmore Avenue, especially as we look at the uh sometimes controversial decisions uh that President Fillmore, Amelia Fillmore made. And at the end of the day, this seemed like the right thing to do at this location. Um I have already spoken to the administration and have been speaking so that when we make this motion, it would not then be you know, is the administration against it, the mayor, and I won't speak for the mayor, uh but I have spoken to the mayor on countless times uh about this. So we both agree, council member Wingo, uh who has a lot of Fillmore and council member uh Noah Kowski have signed on who have a lot. I only have a really small little uh spot on Fillmore uh for elegant district, but uh for for me, it even going in three different districts that are very diverse in some parts, um I think is uh very important. So I want to thank uh council member Wingo and council member Noah Kowski. Um because they could have said no and they did not. They both right away were like, yes. Uh and I give the floor now to council member Wingo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the the this um uh resolution. Uh not only because uh you know, we are honoring the movement, but it's more than just honoring the movement, but making a statement. And uh Fillmore is one of the most major other real ways in uh streets in the city and Maston District. And it's uh our main street, basically. Uh it cuts right through the middle of Maston. And uh when we had conducted a poll on Facebook, of course, a non-scientific uh poll on Facebook, the overwhelming majority of people who responded both uh submitted Jefferson and Fillmore with Fillmore being the leaning winner by just a little margin, but enough for us to you know, uh uh put these signs up on Fillmore. Fillmore also has its historical uh flags of various African Americans all down Fillmore all the way to Martin Luther King Park that was spearheaded by C A O. And we really appreciate that effort. We 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 are hoping that um we can come to an agreement as to where we will have our ceremony. That's going to be the next thing that we have to discuss. But um I'm looking at I'm looking at uh hopefully, hopefully, we can have this on uh in uh M L K Park. I look, Mitch is getting ready to unmute. I'm gonna I'm going to hope that we can have this in M L K Park, being that this is historic. M L K Park is one of those areas that is a uh um you know, the epicenter of our community and we're looking forward to that ribbon cutting ceremony, the unveiling of of this movement. It is such a monumental expression of of what is necessary uh moving forward with the climate, the way it has been with the relations of police and African Americans. Uh and we want to make sure that we say aloud and clear and uh not in just in the vein of the movement. But we want to make sure that we say loud and clear that black lives do matter. Black lives matter too. And anything other than black lives matter would be the antithesis. And I want people to be very, very clear that I'm not saying that to be disrespectful or rude, but black lives matter too. And until we treat all peoples with the same dignity and respect and the value, we won't uh uh black lives matter will just be that a movement and not an expression of reality or truth. We need to make sure that we are continuing as uh local leaders in a community to speak truth to power. And this is more than just a a trailblazing sign. This is uh our heart. This is our sentiment. This is our belief. And we believe that it's going to take all of us to ensure that black lives matter. And we want to direct your attention and again, and now direct your attention to M L K Park, all of all of the folks watching and listening out here. Uh we want to have this in M L K Park. We're going to vote on that next, I guess. But uh in the meantime, thank you for the time, Mr. Uh Chair and uh thank you for the resolution and uh allowing me to contribute to it as well. Appreciate it.
Thank you, council member Noah Kowski.
I'll be brief. I'll just uh state for the record that the M L K Park starts on uh in the Fillmore District, but ends in the Maston District. So we'll come together and do it in the middle of the park, right?
Well, since I wrote the resolution, I'll let you all know.
Mister Chair, it's all a matter of perspective now. Look, yeah, M L K, that that is the border of our district.
Council member Noah Kowski, anything else?
No, that's it.
Well, thank you. Um and so the public will know that right now what we're planning on doing is at every, it won't just be one sign. But imagine going all the way down Fillmore and at every main intersection, you will see Black Lives Matter uh way. Um and that is, that's just significant for so many reasons. Um council member Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I can congratulate my colleagues and just want to add to if I can have my name added to that resolution. It's not going down Bailey, but I'm definitely in support of the idea because um like council, our colleagues have said black lives do matter and we all need to recognize that, you know, if all lives matter, we definitely have to say that black lives definitely matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, um so this would be a motion to believe approved.
Motion to approve.
Second by council member Wingo.
Council member Bowman.
Yes.
Council member Farrelletto.
Yes.
Council member Galamick.
Yes.
Council member Noah Kowski.
Yes.
Council president Pridgen.
Absolutely, yes.
Council member Rivera.
Yes.
Council member Scanlon.
Yes.
Council member Wingo.
Enthusiastically and unapologetically, yes.
Council member Wyatt.
Unequivocally, yes.
This is an item again that makes history in the city of Buffalo. Um in name, although it's a designation. Um the second largest city in the state of New York. When you drive in town and you drive through Maston and you drive through Eloquent and you drive through Fillmore. You drive through one of our major thoroughfares. It will have up the name. And as councilman Wingo said, without apology, Black Lives Matter Way. Thank you to the entire council for supporting this resolution. Next item.
Item number fifty nine, uh sit here in portion of land beneath Buffalo River.
Motion to adopt.
Second by council member Wingo.
Item number sixty, uh waive fees for South Buffalo Farmers Market.
Motion to approve items sixty, sixty one and sixty.
Sixty two, second by council member Scanlon.
That's a member Bowman.
Yes.
Council member Farrelletto.
Yes.
Council member Galamick.
Yes.
Council member no Kaski.
Yes.
Council president Pridgen.
Yes.
Council member Rivera.
Yes.
Council member Scanlon.
Yes.
Council member Wingo.
Yes.
Council member Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number sixty three, Commissioner repeats.
Motion to adopt.
Saying my council member Wingo. Oh, that's it. Alright, um announcements.
Announcement of committee meetings. The following meetings are scheduled to be streamed live on W W W dot Facebook dot com forward slash B F L O C C. Regular committees, committee on civil service, Tuesday, October twentieth at nine forty five A M. Committee on Finance following civil service, uh Tuesday, October twentieth at ten A M. Committee on Legislation, Tuesday, October twentieth at one P M. Committee on Community Community Development, Tuesday, October twentieth to two P M.
Um I apologize, majority leader, council member Wyatt had asked to revisit item one uh during the meeting and I failed to do that. Can we revisit that?
Motion revisit item number one.
Second by council member Wyatt, who has the floor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um I just wanted to, you know, I know the mayor has vetoed this item. This is probably the first veto that we've seen since I've been in the council. And you know, I think it's something that's really important um that it it speaks volumes of this veto. Um I'm concerned about the impact it will have on people who are really struggling. Buffalo is the third poor city in the country. I think that we put this resolution for because we were concerned about the safety of children. And we want to make sure it stays focused on the safety of children. Uh my colleagues and I supported this resolution um because we didn't want to penalize people when children were safely in school. When children are safely in school for people to get tickets at eleven o'clock or twelve o'clock, I think is unfair and unfair to drivers and unfair to our residents. Um I know that we had some conversations with some parents who wanted to the entire day. But there are people who are going to lunch in those other times and that's what we heard loud and clear during our public session when we first addressed it. Is that they were concerned that during the day they're being penalized um when children are safely in school. So I'm going to re um restate that, that this is about the safety of our children. But it's also about a time right now where COVID has impacted a lot of families. And fifty dollars for some may be extremely a lot of money and could possibly have their license or registration suspended. We don't want to have those type of ramifications, especially when we're talking about the the children arrive in school, making sure that people are following the law and when people are dismissed, that people are following the law. Um so I'm willing to do whatever whatever we have to do to make certain that we do and protect um those who are most vulnerable right now. Um and I'm not talking about our children because I put, we put the resolution for because we want them to be safe. We've also signed a resolution for the uh the security arms when buses are um out there that if there's a bus that a car that goes by a bus with an arm extended, that there are people are penalized. So we definitely want to make sure our children are safe. But we don't want to punish people and penalize them when again, our children are safe in the school and there's no one out on the street. People should not be getting tickets because they drove in front of a school. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alrighty, um council members, any announcements for your districts? I do have one. I'm having bingo with Pridgen. No, I'm just kidding.
Hey, I will, I will go to that. I will be there.
Annual senior citizens Halloween party drive through will be October twenty ninth, twenty twenty eleven A M until two P M at the at five eighty five William, the uh William Emsley Y M C A. Again, that's October twenty ninth, eleven to do to prizes for best costume, first, second and third. And food will be catered by Texas Roadhouse. And uh it's also being sponsored by United Healthcare and Citizens Healthcare and Texas Roadhouse. So seniors um we have to do it a different way, but uh you will, your costume will be judged and there will be uh food and the cost is free. Is that why you? R S V P. Okay, Mark is behind me. You see his arm, eight four five five four four oh, eight four five five four four oh. I don't know what happens if you don't R S P, they're not going to let your car drive up or something, but you might not get lunch. So uh please uh join us then. Any other announcements? Council member Wyatt.
Just want to announce to the residents, we do have a um safe Halloween movie that's going to take place at the Greater Faith Bible Tappanacle, three ninety one Edison, um October thirty first. There's a be opening, opening up at five thirty. We will begin at six thirty at free candy. Um but we make sure we social distance and you must wear a mask and you must stay in your vehicle. Um but I'm excited about doing something different. Um we want to make sure that our families and our children still enjoy that time um in the community. And um thank you to Greater Faith Bible Tappanacle for playing a role in this um Halloween drive through. Thank you. Drive in.
Alright, any other announcements?
Uh, Mr. Mister Chair.
Council member Wingo.
Say this without laughing. No, I'm I'm going to invite my colleagues for all of us to do a bingo event.
Is it going to be bingo with Wingo again?
It's gonna be bingo with Wingo in the city of Buffalo. Bingo with Wingo in Buffalo.
Well, I would tell you this, I didn't know how you were gonna pull it off, but they did pull it off.
Hey, we pulled it off. We pulled it off. I think, you know, I I gotta say this because I want to thank all of the seniors that did come out. We had, I mean, they had so much fun. I mean, they got a little frustrated, but uh it started raining and then my my workers and 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 my co-host was doing a lot of talking and they wanted to play bingo. But uh for the most part, uh they had so much fun. We have a ton of voicemails. So all of my seniors who are watching, who are listening uh to this, to this uh meeting today, uh you are so very welcome. And because of the success of this event, Mr. Chair, uh we have to do another one, but it's cold outside now and I don't want my staff standing outside. So we're going to do another one, but uh you know, I if anyone wants to join in next time, I'll be sure to uh bring you on and it won't just be bingo with Wingo. It'll be bingo with the city of Buffalo. Okay, how about that? But for the most part, I mean, they have so much fun. I just want to invite everyone uh to collaborate. Uh we did get some great feedback and constructive criticisms uh so that the next one can be even better and more successful. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
But I think any effort at all is important uh to keep our seniors active. Nothing is perfect, but good job. Um I, as we, before we get off, I think I have a solution to when the signs are ready, where we should do the ceremony. I think that we should go to a place where Maston, Fillmore, Eloquent meetup, and I guess we could probably start walking from one of them and then probably end up at the Martin Luther King bust. I think, I think. Right? We'll figure it out. Alright, everybody. Uh is that it?
That's it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second by council member Noah Kowski.